I'd like to call this Village Board meeting of November 29th, 2018, to order. Would the clerk please take the roll?
President Jackson.
Here.
Trustee Schmidt.
Here.
Trustee Sullivan.
Here.
Trustee Light.
Here.
Trustee Meritado.
Here.
Trustee Poczek.
Here.
Trustee Schroeder.
Excused. Would you all please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the fight of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with whose chief justice for all. Before we start, I need to call for a public hearing by the mayor and board of trustees for the purpose of discussing the annual tax levy assessment and collection of taxes for the fiscal year beginning May 1st, 2018, and ending April 30th, 2019. Okay, when's the public hearing?
Now.
Now.
This is the public.
Oh, I'm opening the public hearing.
Yes, ma'am.
How'd I do?
Good.
We're off to a good start.
Sure. Okay. Then I will open the public hearing. So if there's anyone in the public that wishes to address this board regarding the annual tax levy assessment and collection of taxes, please step up to the podium now. Being none, a motion would be in order to close the public hearing. Trustee Poczek.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Public hearing is closed. Trustee Schmidt.
Thank you, Mayor.
Would you like to take over, please?
Yes, I will. The next coffee with the mayor and village board is scheduled for this Saturday, December 1st.
Uh, wait a minute, I goofed, Bill. This is going to be a rough one. Okay, it's not your turn yet, it's mine.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay. This past Sunday, November 25th, we were met with an extreme snowstorm that affected many people in Glendale Heights and many in the Chicago suburbs. Residents all over the area were without power, including our own Public Works Department, which affected communication throughout the department. I want to personally thank all of our residents for their patience during this major winter storm and for your cooperation in removing vehicles off the street so the plows could get through. I also want to thank the Parks Division for removing trees and branches from roadways and for shoveling, which kept our walkways clear for safe access to our police department and for our staff. I also want to thank our police and other emergency services for assisting drivers and those in need, staff at the Sports Hub and Center for Senior Citizens for preparing the warming shelters, and for our Public Works Department for making sure all major roadways were accessible for our police and fire services and residents. Lastly, I want to thank all of our residents who took time to call, post on social media, or send us an email thanking our crews. Please know that we will send these kudos back to all of our employees who worked long hours to ensure our roads were clear and safe. Thank you, everyone, for your hard work and professionalism during this winter storm. Thank you. Now it's your turn, Bill.
Oh, okay. The next coffee with the mayor and village board is scheduled for this Saturday, December 1st, from 10:00 a.m. to noon at the Center for Senior Citizens. If you have any comments, suggestions, or questions for the mayor or village board, please call the mayor's office anytime at (630) 909-5303. Help spread Christmas cheer to those in Glendale Heights. The Village of Glendale Heights Christmas Sharing Program will be helping those in need this holiday season by providing meals and gifts to families. Gift tags listing wish-for items are decorating trees located on the first floor of the Civic Center, lobby of the Center for Senior Citizens, and the first floor of the Sports Hub. Please attach the gift tag to your unwrapped gift donation and return it to the Civic Center or the Center for Senior Citizens by December 7th. For more information on how you can get involved in Christmas sharing, please contact Debbie McKenzie at (630) 260-6050. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Trustee Sullivan.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
While writing your holiday greeting cards to friends and family, please remember our military personnel, whoever are currently serving our country during the holidays. The village is collecting holiday greeting cards and will mail them in time for a holiday delivery. Please drop off your holiday greeting cards to Village Hall by December 3rd. Please do not put cards in envelopes, decorate cards with glitter, or add personal information like email or social media. For more information, please call (630) 909-5327. Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon. Trustee Light.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Visit the Historic House, located at 311 Windy Point Drive, on December 3rd at 6:30 p.m., and experience what a Victorian Christmas might have been like 100 years ago. Admission is free, and refreshments will be served. Tours of the home will be offered, and children will have the opportunity to make a Victorian decoration to take home. For more information on the Victorian Christmas, please contact the mayor's office at (630) 909-5303. Breakfast with Santa will be celebrated at Glendale Lakes Golf Club on Saturday, December 15th, from 9:00 a.m. to 11:30 a.m. Breakfast includes all-you-can-eat pancakes with sausage and a beverage. The price of an adult breakfast is $5, and children's breakfast is $3. Photos with Mr. and Mrs. Claus are $2. No registration is required, and the event fee is paid at the door. Don't miss your chance to tell Santa what you want for Christmas. For more information, please contact the Sports Hub at (630) 260-6060. And I hear there's going to be some trustees cooking, so please come out.
Thank you, Mike.
We've got a couple new ones that aren't.
They're working on.
Thank you, Mike. Clerk Schmidt.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
The Village of Glendale Heights is collecting broken or unused holiday lights. Lights can be dropped off at the Public Works Garage, located at 1635 Glen Ellen Road, on weekdays from 7:30 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Lights accepted for recycling include all colors and lengths of mini lights, C7 lights, C9 lights, rope lights, LED lights, and extension cords. For more information on holiday lights recycling, please call (630) 260-6000. Thank you.
Thank you, Marie. Trustee Meritado.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
The Office of Administrative Services reminds businesses that the deadline for renewing their annual village business license is Friday, December 28th. Please carefully complete and return the license renewal form with the payment to the Village of Glendale Heights Attention Business Licenses. If you have not yet received your business license renewal form or for any other additional information, please contact Administrative Services at (630) 260-60000.
Thank you, Pat.
Thank you.
Trustee Poczek.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Join us on Thursday, December 6th, from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the Glendale Lakes Golf Club for our annual senior holiday luncheon. Seniors will be served a delicious holiday lunch and will be entertained with live entertainment. We will also be accepting new, unopened toys and games to donate to families in need. The cost of the luncheon is $10. For more information or to register for the annual senior holiday luncheon, please stop by at the Center for Senior Citizens or call (630) 260-6050. The Glendale Heights Center for Senior Citizens is a senior health insurance program, SHIP, sponsored site and offers open enrollment assistance for senior citizens now through December 7th. Our trained volunteer counselors can provide one-on-one assistance to Medicare beneficiaries and their caregivers. SHIP volunteers can provide you with the information you need to make educated decisions about your insurance. This free statewide health insurance counseling service is sponsored by the Illinois Department of Aging. Stop by the Center for Senior Citizens to pick up your preventive service program information. Please call the Glendale Heights Center for Senior Citizens at (630) 260-6050 to schedule an appointment for assistance with your health insurance questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Chester. Next, we have Keith. You're up and ready.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Jackson and board. I am honored to have this opportunity to introduce you to a few of the teams that had some success in baseball and football for Glendale Heights this past year. Before I introduce you to the teams, I want to take a moment to thank the families of all the children in these programs, who make sure that the kids are at the practices and games throughout the season and here tonight. The time commitment from them is what helps make these athletes successful on the field. Two of the teams that we are recognizing tonight are part of Glendale Heights Youth Baseball and Softball, or our GHYBS program. I have here in attendance tonight a few of the GHYBS parent board members who have worked with Lead Recreation Supervisor Bill Depew to lead this program of 233 participants this year. The first of the teams from GHYBS tonight is the 14U girls softball team. They're known as the Raptors. Most of this team played together in the spring and then signed up to continue play in the fall. As Coach Arroyo said, after a hot summer of softball, it took the coldest fall night of 30-degree fall ball to bring into focus all of the girls' talents, energy, and play the best games of the year to win the fall ball tournament. At this time, I would like to introduce the 14U Carol Stream Fall Softball League Champions, the Glendale Heights Raptors. So we're going to do it this way. When I call your name, if you could please head up to receive a certificate, the mayor's got them, and they should be in order as best I can. And then we're going to take some pictures, all right? And then we'll do the next team. So here we go. Samantha Alferro.
(applause)
Arroyo.
Billy.
Edson Garsis.
I think he went to the stage.
Yep.
And we're going to take pictures.
Akira Jones.
(applause)
Liliana Rocha.
Okay.
Melissa Saldana.
(applause)
Aya Santiago.
Is that you? Oh, right.
Aware.
Hi.
And then I also want to make sure I get the coaches up there. Enrique Arroyo. Edson Garsis.
Are you there?
Jesse Rocha. All right, so if I could get...
This doesn't work, Keith.
You've got to go a different way. We're getting closer at this. By the time we get to the third team, we'll have it down.
Go ahead.
All right, so I'm going to have all the...
Hi, how are you?
Congratulations.
The girls and coaches then go back in front of the group. We're going to slide back down.
Thank you.
And then if the board could stand, we'll get some pictures.
Let them stand.
Oh.
Board, we need to stand up.
Give them a telephone book.
So they can get...
All right.
All of us.
No, you're... Yeah, 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 okay, that's good. Bill, you stay up there.
Close enough.
Get you in the picture next to you.
Okay.
Everybody in?
Sit on Chester's lap.
Nope.
Ready?
Nope.
One, two, three. One more. One, two, perfect.
Excellent job. Thank you.
And thank you all for a job well done.
All right, the next team I would like to recognize is the 14U Pony Baseball League Champions of the WSB in the spring and the NSYBA in the fall. This team, known as the Wolf Pack, I believe the Wolf Pack are in uniform back there, set goals to start the season to be a top-three team in the league. Not only were they a top-three team, but they had the opportunity to take on North Lake One, which is the big rival, and defeat them in a three-game championship series.
Wow.
In the fall, the team challenged itself and their players to take on different positions and roles in the team, and they faced another Glendale Heights team in the championship of the Carol Stream Fall League, which gave them an opportunity to play in yet another tournament, the NSYBA Fall Tournament, which they also ended up winning. So we are honoring members of both teams tonight. So at this time, I'd like to introduce the WSB and Carol Stream Fall League Champions. So when I call your name, we're going to do this the same way we did the last one, and hopefully it goes a little smoother.
We'll try.
We'll see what I can do here. Setino Busco.
Well, we get the first one right anyway.
Noah Deneau.
Great job.
Jason Valdez.
Great job.
Alexandra Canoe.
Great job.
Noah Tomaszewski.
Jason. Okay.
Isaiah Chavez.
He told me they were all in order.
Anthony Rodriguez.
Jason. Alexander.
Christian Murray.
Isaiah. Hey, Joseph.
Cameron Johnson.
You're welcome.
Nathan Deneau.
Anthony. Okay.
Eamaya Shannon. The coaches for this team, and Mayor, when you get to the coaches part, we had a little mistake here, so you're not going to have certificates for everybody, but we'll get the other certificates later.
Okay.
Eric Deneau.
Whoa, is this you?
Coach Kevin Wagner wasn't able to make it tonight. Ron Tomaszewski.
What's your name?
And Rick Valdez.
No. Eamaya?
All right, so we're going to do the same thing again, guys. We're going to spread out after everybody has their certificate, and we'll take some pictures.
Thank you. Hi.
Congratulations.
Thank you, I'm getting washed, you guys. Okay. Wait a minute, do I have somebody else?
Same way as we did last time.
Kevin?
Stand up again.
Okay. And Damian, is that you?
All right, board, we've got to stand again.
Okay. Thank you, Marie.
I can't even see you. I hate to block you. You can't see me, I can't see you. Ready? One, two, three. One, two, perfect.
Thank you, and great job. Okay.
Okay, the final team that we will be recognizing this evening is the Glendale Heights Spartans 9U Football Team.
Wow.
This team began practicing back in August and had an excellent season. They finished the regular season 8-1, getting them a first-round bye in the playoffs. They won their first playoff game, getting them to the Super Bowl in Lyle, where they were defeated 12-6 by a very strong Downers Grove team. I think this team can be summed up in what Recreation Supervisor Chris Navarro put in his after-season report to me, when he said, "The coaches and players worked hard all season long on developing new players, as well as building on the skills of returning players, and it showed through their performance all season long." At this time, I would like to introduce the 9U Glendale Heights Spartans Football Team. Tremell Battles. Julian Tybor.
Hi.
Jacob Burnett.
Congratulations.
Jaden Perez.
How are you, Jaden?
Kayden Karachek.
There you go, Jaden.
Ethan Torres.
Congratulations.
Mari Harris.
Congratulations.
Andre Williams.
I'm Mari Harris? Yep.
Josiah Wallace.
Great job.
Adrian Scaletta. Edson Miskiness.
Okay. Are you Adrian?
Jesse Burnett.
Thank you. There you go.
Jaden Javier.
Are you Jaden?
Xavier Leonard.
Oh, your name.
Xavier Johnson, excuse me.
Mason? Got it.
Devin Leonard. For the Spartans, Tremell Battles was not able to attend today, but Vince Tybor.
Xavier.
Xavier.
Matthew Bowles.
Divine? Yeah, good job.
Joseph Javier.
These are coaches there. Yeah, I know. I know they call Joyce Joseph Javier.
Vince.
Joseph.
You're welcome.
Matthew?
Okay, board, we've got to do one last picture here.
Congratulations.
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 Do you want to give me the air?
Yeah.
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
All right, here we go.
Ready? No. One, two, three. One more. We need a football mom up here, come on. Sorry. Ready? One, two, three. One more. One, two, three. Perfect.
All right.
Thank you. Congratulations to all of you.
I would like to take this time to thank everybody for joining us tonight. For those of you that are watching on TV, if there are other members of the community looking to join either GHYBS or Spartan football, please check out our winner brochure or call the Sports Hub. We'd be glad to have you join us.
Keith, I just wanted to add, because I see all the parents with their cameras, that we'll make sure that we get the photos that we took to the coaches and get it on our website.
Put them up on the website.
Yep.
And thank all of you for coming with your kids. It's wonderful to look out there and see so many parents with their kids, and all you kids did a great job, and we're proud of you.
Thank you.
Now...
Maybe if they want to go, Linda, you should tell them.
This is their time.
They want to leave.
They want to leave? Aw.
Do you want to hear the audit?
You guys don't want to hear the auditorium.
Yeah.
Thank you for coming.
I haven't picked the linebackers out of them, because those little guys are...
It's a tough act to follow. Yes, it is.
Those are my kids playing sports. I don't know.
Oh, that was the best years of my life. I'm telling you, the best years of my life.
The kid went to Final Four high school year, you know?
I know.
It was fun, it was exciting. The ways to walk and cook up a good rice.
Good job. I'm telling you.
Bye.
Bye.
Thanks for coming.
Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye.
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 The cleaner room out, huh? Yes, we do.
That's it, nobody's... Everybody's gone.
How'd we do? We know how to clean it out.
Now I can take my tie off.
I didn't even start yet. They say accounting is boring, but I mean...
Not personal, Christine.
How true. Next, we have a presentation by Christine Torres from Crow LLP.
Yes. We shortened our name from Crow to just Crow.
I was just going to say, there used to be another word there, too.
Yes, a tricky word. We made it easier for people.
Yes, you did. Thank you very much, and she's going to present us with our 2018 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. It's a capper. It's all yours, Christine.
All right, well, thank you for having me here tonight. We're here to talk about the audit results for the year ending April 30th, 2018, and we'll just dive right in. So we'll start with the most important part of the presentation, is really the financial statement opinions. I'm happy to say that the financial statement opinions are the best that they can be. It's an unmodified or unqualified opinion. It is where you want to be. It means there's no exclusions, no carve-outs, no scope limitations, or there was nothing within the financial statements themselves that we could not form an opinion on. So that means we found supporting documentation for all material amounts and all the footnotes that go into the report with no exceptions. The other opinion that we issued this year relates to your TIF district. We test the various transactions that occurred within the TIF district for compliance with state statute, and here again, we found no exceptions during that testing. The one thing I want to point out is if you look at the opinion on the financial statements, there is an extra paragraph this year that calls out that the village early implemented a GASB statement related to other post-employment benefits. The village was up to get a new valuation, and the valuation, you could either have it done under the old method and then get another one next year. Instead, you upgraded to the new version so that you wouldn't have to implement last year. It did require a prior period restatement in order to implement the standard. That is not something that is meant that the village was doing it wrong in previous years, it was just implementing the standard. So that is something to be expected. Because it was a significant change in how the statements are presented, there is an extra paragraph within the opinion to discuss that. Doesn't mean anything's wrong, it's just calling out that change for the current year. So with that, we have a quick statement of net position summary, and what this represents is all of the funds of the village combined into two columns. You have your governmental activities, where the main fund in that column is really the general fund, which is the main operating fund of the village, and the statement of net position also includes all long-term liabilities, as well as capital assets within that amount. So you'll see here all of that information taken into account. Under unrestricted, you have, in your total net position, your amount for unrestricted does show as negative, however, that's really because of the recording of the long-term liabilities that is expected to be paid off in a number of years. So that's not a cause for concern, it's just implementing the pension and the OPEB liabilities in order to properly state those numbers in accordance with the standards. The business-type activities represents the other enterprise funds, which means they're running on their own. The majority of that fund relates to the water operations of the village, and you'll see here that that information is also included. When comparing those numbers to the prior year, there were no significant changes from the prior year, except for the addition of the new liability as required by the standard. Our next summary here shows the revenues and expenses for the year, and the...
Um, Keith, I just wanted to add, because I see all the parents with their cameras, that we'll make sure that we get the photos that we took to the coaches and get it on our website.
Put them up on the website.
Yep.
And thank all of you for coming with your kids. It's wonderful to look out there and see so many parents with their kids. And all your kids did a great job. And we're proud of you. Um. Now.
Maybe if they want to go, Lindy, you should tell them.
This is their time.
They want to leave.
They want to leave? Aw.
Do you want to hear the audit?
You guys don't want to hear the auditorium? Thank you for coming.
It's a tough act to follow.
Yes, it is.
Oh, that was the best years of my life, I'm telling you, the best years of my life.
Kid went to final four high school year, you know.
I know.
Fun, it was exciting.
Good job. Bye.
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 Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bye. Bye.
Bye.
The cleaner room out, huh?
Yes, we do.
That's it, nobody's, everybody's gone.
How do we do? We know how to clean it out.
Now I can take my tie off.
I didn't even start yet. They say accounting is boring, but I mean.
How true. Um, next we have a presentation by Christine Torres from Crow LLP.
Yes, we shortened our name from Crow to just Crow.
I was just gonna say, there used to be another word there too.
Yes, a tricky word, we made it easier for people.
Yes, you did. Thank you very much, and she's going to present us with our 2018 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. It's a capper. It's all yours, Christine.
All right, well, thank you for having me here tonight. Uh, we're here to talk about the audit results for the year ending April 30th, 2018. And we'll just dive right in, so we'll start with the most important part of the presentation is really the financial statement opinions. I'm happy to say that the financial statement opinions are the best that they can be, it's an unmodified or unqualified opinion. It is, um, where you want to be, it means there's no exclusions, no carve-outs, no scope limitations, or there was nothing within the financial statements themselves that we could not form an opinion on. So that means we found supporting documentation for all material amounts and all the footnotes that go into the report with no exceptions. The other opinion that we issued this year relates to your TIF district. We test the various transactions that occurred within the TIF district for compliance with state statute, and here again, we found no exceptions during that testing. Uh, the one thing I want to point out is if you look at the opinion on the financial statements, there is an extra paragraph this year that calls out that the village early implemented a GASB, a GASB statement related to other post-employment benefits. Uh, the, the village was up to get a new valuation, and the valuation, um, you could either have it done under the old method and then get another one next year. Instead, you upgraded to the new version so that you wouldn't have to implement last year. It did require a prior period restatement in order to implement the standard. That is not something that is meant that the village was doing it wrong in previous years, it was just implementing the standard. So that is something to be expected. Because it was a significant change in how the statements are presented, there is an extra paragraph within the opinion to discuss that. Doesn't mean anything's wrong, it's just calling out that change for the current year. So with that, we have a quick statement of net position summary, and what this represents is all of the funds of the village combined into two columns. You have your governmental activities where the main fund in that column is really the general fund, which is the main operating fund of the village. And the statement of net position also includes all long-term liabilities as well as capital assets within that amount. So you'll see here all of that information taken into account. Under unrestricted, you have, um, in your total net position, your amount for unrestricted does show as negative, however, that's really because of the recording of the long-term liabilities that is expected to be paid off in a number of years. So that's not a cause for concern, it's just implementing the pension and the OPEB liabilities in order to properly state those numbers within accordance with the standards. Uh, the business-type activities represents the other enterprise funds, which means they're running on their own. The majority of that fund relates to the water operations of the village, and you'll see here that that information is also included. When comparing those numbers to the, the prior year, there were no significant changes from the prior year except for the addition of the new liability as required by the standard. Our next summary here, uh, shows the revenues and expenses for the year and the resulting change in net position. You'll see that the governmental activities, oh, your net position increased by almost $5 million for the year. There were a number of factors that went into that, one of them being the decrease of the net pension liability due to some investment changes during the year and some good returns on those investments. Uh, also, you had some nice increases in a couple taxes during the year, your sales tax and your home rule tax all showed some rebound growth, um, from a down economy to a better increase this year. So those were some of the minor items that caused that increase this year. And you'll see the business-type activities pretty much broke even, which is really what the expectation is for those funds, to break even, uh, on a year-to-year basis. The general account, again, here is the main operating account, and this is really where we go and we take a look to see how, um, the village is meeting their current obligations, it's the current payables and the current assets, so that would be cash and any receivables that are expected to come into the village within the next year, as well as any payables that are going to be paid out over the next year. A key number here to look at is total fund balance, and that is at $13 million, and it is positive. And this is where we go to look to see, uh, that we do want to see a positive fund balance here, because that is what you're currently working with. When we look at, um, the year-over-year, you can see your, you had an increase in that fund balance of almost $1 million. And again, that relates to the increase in the taxes for the current year over the prior year. One of the key metrics is the number of months of expenditures in fund balance, and what that metric represents is if all revenues were to stop coming into the village today, how long could the village continue to operate on the expenditures comparable to last year if you didn't make any cuts without any revenues coming in? And that is approximately 7.4 months, which is above the village policy of four months. And the Government Finance Officers Association has released that they like to see anything above two months. So you're well above that metric as well. Uh, that is also slightly above last year's number of 7.2, so that is a slight increase, and that does represent those revenues that increased over the past year. So that is the majority of my presentation, I'd like to say thank you to everyone at the village who helped us get the audit done. Uh, the finance department, of course, is always very quick with responses to our answers and helping us get the information that we need so that we can complete. Uh, but we also do expand into other departments, we, uh, talk to many different areas, including public works, information systems, recreation department, and all of them were very great to work with this year, so we appreciate that. If there's any questions on the financial statements or the audit process, I would love to answer anything that anyone may have.
Any questions? Thank you so very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
It's wonderful to hear that we're in good shape.
Yes.
We knew it, but it's nice to have somebody else tell us. Thank you, Christine.
Thank you.
Excuse me, I, I do have one question.
Yes.
How do we look, among other villages, on a whole?
As far as revenues, expenditures, I, I would say you are right, very close to where the majority of other villages are. Um, it's been challenging over the past couple of years to find new revenues and keep expenditures where they need to be, and I would say that you're doing a great job, as you can see by a million-dollar increase in one year. Uh, we're starting to see, uh, villages rebound slightly with starting to get those increases, but that seems to be a pretty strong increase when compared to other villages for the past year, and I think that really has to do with your expenditures staying pretty flat and stable over the past year and not having a whole lot of increases among those, which is what caused that increase, so. Uh, you are not what I would call in the bottom-tier villages. Everyone always wants a little more reserves, right, so there's always that to shoot for. But in, in the, the time that we had over the past 10 years, that's, that's a hard place to be, so I definitely say you're, you had a good year compared to other villages.
Okay, thank you.
Good.
Any further questions?
Yeah, I got one.
Okay, Chester.
State of Illinois cutting our revenue, how did it affect this village in general?
Uh, well, I would say that the most significant place that you're going to see that is really on the fee that they're charging you, um, for some of the revenues to distribute. That's, that cut your revenues. So that's going to bring them down. It also limits the opportunities for grants, uh, to help aid in public works projects and other improvements. And that's really where I've seen the most complications from the state, from the state cutting revenues, is villages are not able to get as many improvements done with grant monies as they have in the past. They all have to come from either a bond issue, uh, or raising taxes, property taxes, or other taxes within the village, or from savings. So it, it makes things a lot more challenging to get the revenues that you need where in the past those revenues have come from the state.
Thank you.
Any more questions?
No.
Thank you so very much, Christine.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And great job, finance department, as always. Um, next we go to public discussion of agenda items. If anyone would like to address this board on an agenda item, please step forward. Being none, we move on to the consent agenda. Trustee Sullivan.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Miratato?
Yes.
Trustee Pocak?
Yes.
The consent agenda is approved. We have no old business, so new business number one is a motion to waive first reading on new business items two, three, and six. Chester.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
First reading is waived on new business items two, three, and six. Number two, an ordinance authorizing the sale of surplus personal property owned by the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois, surplus computers. First reading has been waived, so this would be ordinance number 2018-77. Trustee Sullivan.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call vote.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Miratato?
Yes.
Trustee Pocak?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
Ordinance 2018-77 is approved. Number three, an ordinance authorizing the sale of surplus personal property owned by the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois. This is surplus vehicles. First reading was waived, so this would be ordinance number 2018-78. Trustee Schmidt?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Chester.
How many surplus vehicles do we have? Anybody know?
But this, this would just represent the current group. Now, there are some vehicles that become removed from the top level and are used as secondary purposes, but as of right now, this would clear what we've got in actual surplus vehicles.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote.
Trustee Miratato?
Yes.
Trustee Pocak?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Ordinance number 2018-78 is approved. Number four, an ordinance to amend Chapter 17 entitled Vacant Buildings of Title 10 Entitled Building Regulations of the Village Code of the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois. This is from the November 8th, 2018 Committee of the Hall, and this is first reading. Number five, an ordinance to amend Chapter 8 entitled Traffic Schedules of Title 7 entitled Motor Vehicles and Traffic of the Village Code of the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois, Installation of Two-Way Stop Sign Eastbound and Westbound Wrightwood Avenue at Gilberto Street. This is first reading. Number six, an ordinance waiving proposal requirements, authorizing the issuance of a notice of award and authorizing the execution of a contract between Sound Inc. and the Village of Glendale Heights for an upgrade to the Village of Glendale Heights Telephone System Server and operational software. First reading has been waived, this would be ordinance number 2018-79. Trustee Miratato?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Pat.
How, when was the last time we did this? Didn't we just do this recently?
Um, we did it in 2011, so when this upgrade is complete, it'll be about seven years old. We've had a lot of discussions because we felt it was a short period of time, but because it's changed from the old, it, it's a computer now, so it's voice-over IP and it goes over data lines. The software and the computer boxes do not have that long type of system, um, operational that we had before where we might have been able to keep a phone system 12, 15 years. Now, this is not a complete phone system upgrade, so everyone will keep their same phone desk, so this is really almost like the computer box and the software. And to be honest, we will probably need to replace the entire system in about five years. And I'm hoping at that time, with technology changes, there are now some cloud solutions and some other solutions, we'll have to examine that at that time, but though this is an expensive upgrade, comparatively to a complete phone system upgrade, this is the most of cost-effective way to continue that support and ensure our phone system is operational.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further discussion?
Holly, will we?
Chester.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Holly, will we know, uh, what the cost will be later? Get an estimate?
For, in, in four or five years, yeah, we tried to do some outlining in that memo, we did look at some cloud solutions for comparisons, and I did speak to other, um, phone, telephone system providers, um, and, and depending on, we're thinking that we may want to go to a cloud solution at this point. But again, with technology changing so quickly in four or five years, you know, that the cloud solutions might be better, maybe the voice-over IP phone systems might be better. So it's hard to say, but right now, if we put in a brand-new phone system, we'd be looking at over $125,000, and some of the cloud solution costs are a little bit pricey, but as, again, as, as technology improves, I think that that whole opportunity will be different and improved in, in that time period.
You're checking everything out.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Miratato?
Yes.
Trustee Pocak?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Ordinance number 2018-79 is approved. Okay, number seven is an ordinance to authorize the issuance of an entertainment permit for live entertainment for Schnitzel Plats located at 729 East North Avenue in the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois. That is first reading. Number eight, an ordinance to authorize the issuance of an entertainment permit for live entertainment for Jack's Pub and Grill located at 338 East Army Trail Road in the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois, first reading. Number nine, an ordinance to amend Chapter 1 entitled Combined Water Works and Sewage System of Title 9 entitled Water and Sewer of the Village Code of the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois, first reading. Number 10, an ordinance providing for the levy assessment and collection of taxes for the fiscal year beginning May 1st, 2018 and ending April 30th, 2019 for the Village of Glendale Heights, DuPage County, Illinois, first reading. Number 11, an ordinance for the levy and assessment of taxes for the fiscal year beginning May 1st, 2018 and ending April 30th, 2019 in and for the Village of Glendale Heights Special Service Area Number 1, that is Glendale Lakes Business Park, first reading. Number 12, an ordinance for the levy and assessment of taxes for the fiscal year beginning May 1st, 2018 and ending April 30th, 2019 in and for the Village of Glendale Heights Special Service Area Number 2, Glendale Industrial Park, first reading. Number 13, an ordinance for the levy and assessment of taxes for the fiscal year beginning May 1st, 2018 and ending April 30th, 2019 in and for the Village of Glendale Heights Special Service Area Number 3, that's High Grove East Industrial Park, first reading. Number 14, an ordinance for the levy and assessment of taxes for the fiscal year beginning May 1st, 2018 and ending April 30th, 2019 in and for the Village of Glendale Heights Special Service Area Number 4, High Grove West Industrial Park, first reading. Number 15, an ordinance for the levy and assessment of taxes for the fiscal year beginning May 1st, 2018 and ending April 30th, 2019 in and for the Village of Glendale Heights Special Service Area Number 5, Glen Point Business Park, first reading. Number 16, an ordinance for the levy and assessment of taxes for the fiscal year beginning May 1st, 2018 and ending April 30th, 2019 in and for the Village of Glendale Heights Special Service Area Number 6, Polo Club Heights Industrial Park, first reading. Number 17, an ordinance for the levy and assessment of taxes for the fiscal year beginning May 1st, 2018 and ending April 30th, 2019 in and for the Village of Glendale Heights Special Service Area Number 7, Saco Industrial Park, first reading. Number 18, an ordinance for the levy and assessment of taxes for the fiscal year beginning May 1st, 2018 and ending April 30th, 2019 in and for the Village of Glendale Heights Special Service Area Number 8, Glendale Heights Business Park, first reading. Number 19, an ordinance of the Village of Glendale Heights, DuPage County, Illinois, abatement of the 2018 tax levy for $3 million, General Obligation Bonds Series 2006, first reading. Number 20, an ordinance of the Village of Glendale Heights, DuPage County, Illinois, partial abatement of the 2018 tax levy for $8,825,000 General Obligation Corporate Purpose Bonds Series 2009, first reading. Number 21, an ordinance of the Village of Glendale Heights, DuPage County, Illinois, partial abatement of the 2018 tax levy for $29,940,000 General Obligation Corporate Purpose Bond Series 2010, first reading. Number 22, a resolution to approve and authorize the execution of an agreement binding between Employers Claim Service Incorporated and the Village of Glendale Heights. This would be resolution number 2018-R-74. Trustee Schmidt?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call vote.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Miratato?
Yes.
Trustee Pocak?
Yes.
Resolution 2018-R-74 is approved. We now go to public discussion of agenda items.
I'm sorry, that should have, Mayor, that should have been 75, I think.
What? What?
Yeah, we did 74 on the consent, so...
What was that, Rocky?
Should have been 75 and not 74.
The resolution?
Resolution?
The one, item eight is 73. On the consent agenda.
So 74 is right.
I don't know. That's what I'm showing. Is there another one that?
Sorry. Sorry, I missed it. Also, turn it around now.
It's okay. All good.
Okay, so that was right. Did we vote yet? No.
Yes, we did.
Yes, we did.
Okay. We now go back to public discussion of agenda items if there's anyone in the public that wishes to address this board. Okay, step forward.
Am I a member of the public? Can you add to the executive session, Section C, 1, the compensation of employees? Particular employees?
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay. Sure. Executive session will be collected, collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees or their representatives or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees pursuant to the Open Meetings Act 5 ILCS 120/2C2.
And then?
Whatever you have to add.
The other one, Mayor, will be compensation for a specific employee pursuant to the Open Meetings Act 5 ILCS 120/2C1.
Okay. Sure, I can write this. Compensation.
For a specific employee.
For specific.
Employees. Pursuant to the.
Employees.
Pursuant to the Open Meetings Act. OMA is off. Open Meetings Act.
Pursuant to the Open Meetings Act 5 ILCS 120/2C2.
C1. C1, Mayor.
C1.
2C1. Does anybody want to repeat all that?
No.
Sure.
Trustee Light.
So moved.
Second.
It's going to be roll call vote, but first we have to go to the Committee of the Hall, so.
Can recess to that?
Recess to the Committee of the Hall.
Do you want me to make that motion?
Sure.
Okay. I motion that we recess to the Committee of the Hall.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Your turn, Dan.
I'd like to call the Committee of the Hall meeting of November 29, 2018. Read notice present.
Nodded.
Is there any others? Oh, great.
None.
None. Okay, we have public comment.
Fine.
Being none. We move to committee recommendations. Plan Commission. A recommendation to approve an amendment to a previous approved plan unit development to allow an addition of one express entrance lane to the yard gate. Reduce the number of parking spaces by 10 for the lane addition, and relocate one handicap accessible parking stall located at 521 East North Avenue. This is all Menards. Bill?
We move this to the board with a recommendation to concur.
Second.
Do you have a discussion? Mike?
I have a question. What is the express lane for?
Menards is starting a new program where you can order online and then drive to the location and show them your phone or the printout, and they'll have the merchandise waiting for you. We are the second location in the country that this will happen, so it's pretty exciting. The first is in their, at their corporate location in Eau Claire, Wisconsin, so they're starting, rolling this out in Glendale Heights.
That's great, because I've never heard it.
Who you order from, like Amazon?
No, no, you order from Menards.
Oh, Menards.
So it's Menards, Menards.com, and then you can order and then just go and pick it up.
Oh, wow, all right.
But instead of waiting for the trucks and everybody else to go and be cleared into the yard, you've got an express lane.
That is great.
Okay, any other? Okay, we do have a second, so all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Being none, we'll move it to the board for approval. Number two, Plan Commission. A recommendation to approve various tax amendments to the Village of Glendale Heights zoning ordinance. Mayor?
Move it to the board with a recommendation to concur.
Second.
Discussion.
Trustee Meritato, if I may. Trustee Schmidt raised an issue after the Plan Commission meeting in regard to staff's recommendation that a no-parking signs be exempt from requiring a sign permit. That's one of our recommendations because we have, in multifamily situations or commercial, people want to put up no-parking, violators will be towed. Trustee Schmidt pointed out that we don't want to allow those kinds of signs for single-family homes, so we would like to modify that language to indicate that parking signs, warning no-parking or violators will be towed at the owner's expense within the commercial, industrial, or multifamily zoning districts only.
Makes sense.
Okay. Any questions on it? Okay, we have a second already, so all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, being none, we'll move it to the board for approval. We move on to a discussion regarding prohibit the feeding of wild animals. Who's going to take that? Who asked it?
So, we are currently working with the village attorneys on drafting an ordinance that prohibits the feeding of wild animals, but does allow for bird feeders and some other type stuff. The ordinance should be ready for your review at the next regular scheduled board meeting.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Okay, so, somebody feeding cats? Somebody calls?
We will go over there and tell them about the ordinance, and the ordinance will prohibit that.
Okay.
You think it's advisable, if somebody's doing that, to call the police department first before a resident should, me go next door and tell them, hey, don't do this?
Yeah, I can't answer that. It all depends on how well you get along with your neighbor, right?
I don't.
We would, we would, we would actually, you know, if people are neighborly and you can discuss things amongst the neighbors and work things out neighborly, we would actually prefer that before the police get involved, but certainly if the police need to be involved, then we should be involved.
At the present time, there's no tickets issued or anything, or warnings or anything?
We don't have an ordinance currently.
Okay, that's what I'm saying.
Right.
Okay.
I mean, we'll explain to them the reason why we're saying this.
Yeah, I don't see us going out there and citing somebody right away. I see us going out there and advising them of the new ordinance and working with them to curtail the activity that's bringing all these animals into the yards.
Because them feeding the cats bring other animals that all, might hurt their dogs or neighbors' dogs.
Yeah, and it just, you know, leaves a disorderly area anyway.
I think Mike Light brought this up. He wanted that, right? You had somebody in your neighborhood or something?
Bad skunks.
Skunks?
Yeah, and they were just feeding an abundance amount of animals in their yard. It wasn't just, you know, the birds or barrel cats or such. It was everything that came down.
This ordinance, as it's currently written, will allow for bird feeders, and it will allow for, you know, other activities that people, you know, do as a hobby. Won't prohibit that.
Only because we don't want people to think that we're, we don't want them to, you know, there's a reason why you can't feed your cats or, you know.
Yeah, and that also brings raccoons, and it brings skunks, and it brings possums, and it brings, you know, other animals that you don't necessarily want.
Skunks, right.
Under your porches and around your neighborhoods.
Right. Okay, I know, because we ran into this problem.
Mm-hmm.
Many times.
A while back. So, okay. Is there any other?
No.
Okay, being none, any motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Meeting is adjourned.
I'm sure we're going to adjourn the Committee of the.
Okay, I'm going to call this village board meeting back to order because we have a motion on the floor, or do I need to repeat all that?
No, the motion's on the floor.
Motion is on the floor to adjourn to executive session to discuss all the things I read before.
Good.
Okay?
That's good.
Does somebody want to make the motion?
You're so moved.
To adjourn to executive session?
Adjourn to executive session.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Thanks. You wanted to get?
We already had a motion.
It didn't adjourn, though. It didn't, we didn't adjourn to executive session in the first motion, so.
Okay.
This motion is going to do it better.
Okay, okay.
Well, better devote twice than.
Trustee Pojack.
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt.
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan.
Yes.
Trustee Light.
Yes.
Trustee Meritato.
Yes.
We are adjourning to executive session, and our next village board meeting is, because we moved the December board meeting.
Special board meeting on December 6.
December 6?
Our December board meeting.
It's the 13th.
13.
13.
So we'll be back December 13.
That's it.
No.
Jeez.